Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We're at a Leeds Town Council meeting on Wednesday, July 25th, 2012. We'll start off with a pledge of allegiance led by Angela Rohr.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call will start on Frank's end. Alan Roberts.
Joe Allen.
With tonight's agenda, I'm looking for any declarations of extensions or conflicts by council members. And on tonight's consent agenda is tonight's agenda and a minute meeting, a minutes from the meeting of July 11th, 2012. They're quite extensive. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to flip those over. I'll leave it up to the council, whether you feel like you're comfortable enough with keeping that on the consent agenda. Aye. Close message. From July 11th. Would you feel more comfortable about doing those few ink changes before we ratify? Are you okay? I'd be looking for a motion to accept tonight's concern, Jim.
I move to accept tonight's consent agenda. It's been moved by Joe Allen, segmented by Nate Blake.
Mayor, do you need to give us any comments as part of that motion? Or does this seem?
The primary has. If we, Angie, since you've got them on your copy, I'd be best if you just make your copy available to Amy. But we ought to include in that motion with some kind of language stating that.
I'd like to revise my motion then.
Okay.
I move to approve tonight's consent agenda with changes that council member Angela Rohr made on her version that now possession of our town clerk report.
Nate, are you okay?
I'm okay.
It's been moved by Joe Allen and segmented by Nate Blake. To approve tonight's consent agenda. Those changes submitted by Angela Rohr should be to clerk reporter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote?
I don't have anything written down here for announcements. I assume everybody survived the state holiday. Kind of thought maybe we'd have a little parade down at Fang Street. It's kind of different this year. Did hear anything from any groups or individuals desire in advance without doing a, usually a children's parade at the end of the party? Is it kind of interesting that the use of fireworks would pretty much have left the town, which was in keeping with the restriction on?
Yeah, I'm glad that you brought that up. That, that still is allowed, remember that by state legislature, three days before, three days after the 24th. Keep in mind that the fireworks that we want to participate in is to be taken to the town park under the supervision of the fire district. That's what we decide.
Or you can come up behind my house, there's nothing to burn there, so.
Ron, maybe it'll go through your window. I don't think I would encourage that. On one note there, Ron, and you've been made aware, next week Leeds will be meeting with some federal and state officials on looking at revegetating the area there. Keep in mind, it includes BLM land, a large chunk of BLM, but there are some private properties there too, so. Next week they'll be, you know, so.
And I want to publicly thank Joanne Barnes for that night.
Yes.
Low end?
Low end, yes. It's Tuesday, Tuesday at 10:00. Okay, we're going to move on. Item number seven, citizen comment. I do want to make a statement and make it very clear. I think this council has bent over backwards by allowing citizen comment and being extremely flexible with the amount of time and the issues that people bring up. I would remind you that if you have respect for the rest of the public and you have respect for your elected or appointed officials and the agenda that they're governed by once they adopt it, that you adhere to the language that's written on the agenda as far as citizen comment. By no means do I want to discourage the public from having open discussion with their elected and appointed officials. There's a proper time for that. And that's what I think that we need to be very responsible about, the proper time for that. I'd also say that if, if the general public or anyone in the general public cannot be disciplined enough to respect the rest of the public here, you will be asked to leave. And we have a law enforcement officer here that would be more than happy to help get an adult. I don't say that to be rude. I say it only to be professional about the way that this board needs to work. And so with that said, on citizen comment, we have Wayne Peterson.
Wayne Peterson just moved here to 975 Bonanza Road and attended a few meetings. I just wanted to share with the council some thoughts that I had thinking back to the beginning of a business career 33 years ago, where one of the first things I was involved in with was trying to help resolve disputes between some very successful actors and actresses and some very successful production studios, because nobody had the foresight to figure out that VHS tapes were going to be developed and who was going to get the benefit of those VHS revenues when they started to flow. And having heard about the discussions of some very long range type of arrangements that are being considered here in town, I would just encourage everyone to realize we didn't know in 1962 where we were going to be here in 2012. We don't know where we're going to be from a technology standpoint come 2062. And as we draft any agreements, I think it's very important to keep in mind that technology is going to change. And just one example of an area is with lighting. Right now, when one flies over the country, you see a lot of wasted light coming up from the ground below. And one of the things that's very attractive to my family in this area is the ability to look to a night sky that is very unpolluted with the kind of light pollution we were used to from the metropolitan New York area where we lived in New Jersey. So when there are things being considered, such as the ability to limit that kind of wasteful use of electricity damaging the night sky and lots of other areas, I would just encourage you in those documents to realize we don't know what technology is going to bring going forward, but we should make sure that everybody is going to benefit from that new technology as it is developed as a result of any agreements that are reached today for things going into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, our ordinance is at this point on lighting. A lighting ordinance is quite restrictive, actually. I'm not saying what the future may bring, but at this point, we do have a fairly restrictive lighting ordinance. Okay, Betty McKnight.
I was just kind of looking through this document here, and it's talking about some of the things that I mentioned a long time ago, other people have mentioned. I think one of the first meetings, we were talking about funding ahead of time right at the beginning and how Coral Canyon had to put up 23 million just to be sure that all their infrastructure was paid for. And that is why the bonding or the letter from the bank is so important, that we know that the funding is going to be available and, and is available. I'd like to just talk a little bit about RPO feasibility study on Bonanza Road. That's in the process right now. It's, I was told today that it would be finished in November.
Are you referring to Babylon Road rather than Bonanza Road?
Yes, you're right. Babylon Road. And I, I think this is, I'm glad this came up right now, because because you check and see what issues are involved in the building of that road, I get an idea of how much it will cost and how many cars will be using that road.
Could you clarify which Babylon Road is, is it about 900 North Road or 900?
This whole road, actually 900 north going through between Howard and Southages and then on down and going clear over to Hurricane. So they're going to have, they're going to have to go over the Virgin River gorge like they do in Laverkin. And there's a lot of expenses on this particular road, but in five months, they will know whether that is feasible or not. And so since that's the major road here really of this development, according to their plan, I think it would be very prudent and wise to wait, table any signing of any agreements until we see what that shows. I know a man who is doing a multi-use development in American Ford. It's, the city actually approached him and his partners. They all have something to contribute to a development. He's an appraiser, there's a lawyer, there's an engineer, there's an architect. They all do work on this plan. The city wanted them to develop this project for low-income people. They did not give them the best spot in the whole city. It's actually towards the freeway. But they'll get a nice place to live. However, after seven years and a couple of million dollars, they have just now gotten to the development plan. And that's, remember, with all the backing and encouraging of the city. And that was, they were on roads, they had utilities, they had sewers, and it still took that long even with all their expertise. So I, I think that we need to get through some of this conceptual stage and get things like signed statements by the W Water Conservancy District and for water and by utilities, their notes. And, and so we know where the sewer is going to be. We really don't know where that is at the present time. So if there's a lot, it really needs to be nailed down. If we get things nailed down, then we'll be in a position to sign. I have a, I won't read this off, but this is by a developer, and he says, "Cities and counties do not make approval of a development based upon conceptual plans. Agreement plans between government entities and developers are made once all these provisions are approved and the developer is ready to build." They are usually good for 18 months. Timeframes for agreement plans usually run five years or less. Of course, that doesn't mean they cannot be renewed or extended, but that's kind of the point, right? I don't know what's been resolved on the new plan that we have tonight, but I just like to split that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, would it be appropriate you make a comment?
Yeah, of course.
Betty, thank you for the information. Mayor and I attended the Washington County Water Conservancy District today at the meeting. And one of the topics was the concern of our projected population growth for the county, which has bases on funding for roads, for water projects, for other infrastructures within the county and other management funds from state and federal. Based on the demographics and the calculations, it shows that both Summit County and Washington County would have a decrease in enrollment per population, which both counties are going to challenge to the state. But when they did a regression, one of your models, it showed that we're pretty much consistent with our growth over the past 20 years. But I bring that up because one of their water projects, even though there's pay growth and there's fiber optics and other things running through this one plant or a water pipeline, it's going to cost a million dollars for the study. So I think for Babylon Road to be developed due to the tortoise and other water issues for that road to come through is going to be very, very expensive. So the, this could be a hardship for the county and for future road development if a hole is at a 2.6 growth rate rather than a 6.5 growth rate. Because what happens is that UDOT looks at the growth patterns in areas and determines where it will be the highest need and starts prioritizing developments in that project. Would get a major impact on us had a clover leaf or a roundabout or any type of development for roads. Mayor was there, I had a little earlier, but was there any indication that would direct help into Betty's concern?
Well, what I would, what I would say, Betty, is let the feasibility study bring whatever information it's going to bring, and then we move from there. And that, that's not us. That's, that's an RPO, however Leeds is a member of that RPO. And so why worry about whether I got to hitch a horse up to my wagon if I don't need to pull a wagon somewhere? Or if I do need to pull a wagon somewhere, how many horses do I need on there? So I'll wait until the feasibility study comes in.
So you're just saying we should wait before we sign?
I'm saying that I would wait on any concerns about what's going to happen with any cordless facility feasibility when it comes in, because anything else would be just speculation on.
Right. So we should wait so we can at least see what it brings.
When you say should wait, should wait what?
Until that feasibility study is completed in November, probably five months.
You're saying we should wait before we do take?
Sign the agreement.
We'll sign the agreement when we're, when the town's ready to sign the agreement. That's it in a nutshell. That's the only thing I could tell you at this point.
Right, but that should be considered?
There'll be a lot of things considered by this council before they sign a document. Okay, we're moving on. We have a public hearing scheduled tonight, but I'd like to give just a little background. Bob, are you comfortable enough with that background on this signature block for the county to kind of just put out the reasoning behind that?
Probably so. Don't get a shot of it?
Yeah. Okay, this, I thought we talked about some of the introduction of proposed ordinance, 21012-4, amended restated superseded subdivision requirement for the land. This ordinance requires the county treasurer signature on the final plat. That's a requirement that all St. George City has gone, haven't gone forward with. In response to, Washington County has asked all municipalities to adopt an ordinance requiring a county treasurer signature block on the final plat. This is due to the subdividing apparent parcels which show back taxes, even though the new parcels with the new tax numbers stay current on their property taxes. The owners are losing their homes because apparent parcels taxes are years past due. Washington County Attorney's Office is prepared to draft ordinance stating attorney claims below. Quickly, I guess, the purpose of the ordinance again is to require the county treasurer sign the final plats prior to their approval and recording in order to certify the taxes, special assessments, and fees due and owing on the property have been paid in full. So it's protection for the buyer of those lots that in fact those are, all assessments and taxes are paid. Attorney has made this lot of findings that there have been instances in Washington County where land developments failed to pay the taxes on property and then subdivided property and sold it. When this occurs, within a few years of purchasing property, the new owner earns a delinquent tax and unless something can be arranged, the developer, the new owner is responsible to pay the delinquent taxes. This unfortunate situation can be prevented by having the county treasurer certify that no taxes are owing prior to the final plat approval and recording. And if they're going to take plats down, the county recorder has recorded it, stop first at the county treasurer and make that signature signed below. Says Leeds is working with Washington County and other municipalities within the county to pass similar amendment to their final plat ordinances. Having a uniform requirement throughout Washington County will prevent confusion on the part of developers and promote the payment of taxes prior to the final plat approval and recording. Requiring the county treasurer to sign a signature block here of the final plat will make it clear that no taxes are owed on the property. So it's basically protection for the potential buyer of those lots? When I was first, when it was first brought to my attention by the county commissioners on this proposal that they had, it sounds logical, but one part of me says another, another signature from government, okay? The part that, I guess the part that bothers me is there's innocent people that lost their homes because of back taxes on these parent parcels. But I asked, where was the processing on whatever local level and where is the responsibility on title companies that are supposed to make sure and, and hope this? That's just kind of some of my thoughts. When you first look at it, you say, well, that's a no-brainer, yeah, protection.
Anytime you add another step to the processes, you increase time and increase cost. Have there ever been projections thrown out on, is this going to raise the fees charged to developers and which will then be passed on to the end producer, the end homeowner?
I asked that specifically to the county commissioners if there would be an increase in fees for an increase in their staff time dealing with this signature. Verbally, they informed me that it would cut a lot of their time that they deal with properties that have back taxes owing on them, going through that process, trying to mitigate those issues that were caused. That's what they. It seems that the title companies in that process that most cities use to require the title report on the plat catches probably 98% of problems. But I guess apparently, and according to the county, there have been some instances and where they occur, obviously they're very painful, very painful. It'd be painful to whoever lost their home. Yeah, or, or just had to pay back taxes if you had to shell out another, you know, whatever amount of money and just cough up taxes. I mean, you really, you know, don't feel, you're responsible, that's a painful deal. So it should be things like to be a fairly routine process that we, since the county recorder is the one that reports the plat, the treasurer before that occurs could verify that there aren't no pass or going for taxes owing. You know, it shouldn't be a real burden on the developer. Turns out not to work, and obviously the town can rescind the action.
I was just thinking that the time between this signature was on the plat and the time that another buyer pays responsibility for it could be several years. And then there would be no proof other than tax companies.
Well, at least when the plat gets recorded, the plat is recorded and then at that point property can be sold. You can't sell lots until they're actually recorded. That would at least establish a clean record. Now, if there's taxes owing after that, we know who's responsible. The owner of the property.
Indivisible, individual law assets.
Yeah. At least, at least when the tax, the plat is recorded, at least it starts out with a cleaning record instead of having to. Well, I mean, I would envision the process being the developer, city, whoever takes the plat to the county stops first at the county treasurer. I don't know. Hopefully that's on more than date to check that and the meeting results to the county recorder for recording. Okay, I, I thought it was important that we throw out some information before we open the public hearing that may answer some questions the public have and may initiate some other questions they didn't have, so. And I'd like to move into a public hearing.
I, I move that we move into a public hearing to discuss, allow the audience to discuss the amendment restated supersede subdivision ordinance, chapter 21, dash.
Time's up. Thanks. It's been moved by Frank Lloydko and segmented by Angie Rohr to move into a public hearing as stated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I would ask if there are any public comments on this specific item, come up to the mic and.
Anybody have any further questions?
Okay, we can close that public hearing.
Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing on amended restated supersede subdivision ordinance, chapter 21, restated.
It's been moved by Frank Lloydko and segmented by Angie Rohr to close the public hearing as stated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there any further discussion on the council?
And the death certificate and those other things. Because down the road, that would save the town money in case there was a particular contagious disease or some factor of confused with the long body or leg length or whatever, and that would keep the town from being liable for consuming the body. So, you know, it's probably best to dot her i's and cross her t's. Okay? I like that. I didn't know we weren't doing that, so.
No, it's been pretty cut and dried. When I took this over ten years ago, that's the way I was trained and the way it was done. It's just, uh, there was not many records except on who owns which plot.
I like that little comparison here when we talk about cemetery plots. That property isn't any different than someone buying a plot or a flat or a piece of property to place a dwelling on. It's something that they're purchasing and something that they want specifically defined exactly what it is, the size of it, where it is, and they want to record it as to how old it is. But I think it is just as important in a cemetery as it is any other piece of property to record.
We do record it. We do have the record of the sales, and then the people all get, the buyers all get a deed.
I think adding that, the other statistical data, you know, what is the sole purpose of genealogy for future generations, having those records available? I think it's a good idea for our town to keep those records.
Okay. We can get that. We can do that for the morticians. The mortuary is usually the one that does that.
Another suggestion I had was Section 7, the orders and responsibilities. Compaged, uh, or, "Under no circumstances will town assume responsibilities for errors in opening graves and quarters of the unit by telephone." I think that's great, but I don't think the town should ever take orders to open grave by telephone.
Probably should. I dwell on that myself. It says, uh, facts or...
Yeah, I'm in writing.
Very in writing.
I think you could add something there that says that the town won't open a grave unless instruction during writing. It sure would be a bad deal to get a phone call and not have a person with authority telling you to open up somebody's grave.
So, um, it sounds like I heard that, uh, that, I don't see them here, but that we should be getting a certificate of death, a certificate of an official one? And if so, then that means that we need to store those in perpetual, in perpetuity? And it seems like then we would be more responsible for who's actually buried there? And how do we, how do we determine?
The official records are stored at the county court. We need them.
So, we wouldn't need that property?
No, I don't know. As we were looking at it for just information purposes only.
So, where do you store it?
Who? That's right. That is all checked with the county.
Yeah. I can sign it to the validation.
Okay.
I think one of the important things, the reason that we need the death certificate, with the cases, it may not happen to leave, but it does happen in situations where you have four or five family members that really don't exist in a party. And then their parent dies, and someone who doesn't really have custody or isn't, you know, known as the benefactor of the will, if there is a, they go ahead and make arrangements and have your body buried, and the other family members want to know the cause of death, so they want the body exhumed. If we don't have the correct records in the death certificate, we might be brought into the suit. So, I mean, it's a rare situation. Usually the hospitals take care of that matter before they release the body or the certificate. Cause unknown or potential death or whatever might be the cause, but, you know.
I gotta hold to several cemetery, or morticians and find out if they get all that information, how easy it would be to do that.
Last meeting, Darryl, we had an individual come here and present a vault that is made out of PVC. And what, you know, our language in our cemetery, proposed cemetery ordinance, doesn't allow that type of material.
No reason.
And so, what he was doing was presenting to the council, well, is this something that you think that you could include in your ordinance for that type of material? And I, I don't know how restrictive that you want to get for the type of material of burial, though.
The only thing I heard on that was, uh, erect, or, you know...
You stand them, you stand them with their head up, or you stand them with their head down?
Down, right. And just a bunch of PVC pipes down there and just...
These, he was referring to these as being horizontal vaults.
They're just a regular, uh, shaped like a vault, not a pipe.
They're pipe, but they are laid horizontal.
And a pipe would be much stronger. The construction of the circle would be stronger than a square.
Yeah.
And it pointed out that water, all kinds of, uh, pipes is, and it was a twenty-two inch diameter pipe. It's very larger underground.
There was another one. I'll check on that. One interment, this is on Section 8, uh, one. One interment shall be allowed in a casket except for a parent with their infant child, or two children who are buried at the same time, for the addition of one cremated remains in the casket at the time of burial. When that casket comes here, I don't know what's in it. You know, I think this is just a waste of ink myself. I mean, people, when they're prepared at the mortuary, they might have a, which brings another thing, it says no cats buried. They might have a pet playing with ashes of a cat or something. But like I say, I have no, no, uh, what, I'm not going to open up every casket and check it out, so I just kind of like to eliminate that part.
I would suggest that you keep it in there, regardless of whether or not you check the casket. Just thinking about future liability, if there was ever, who knows what circumstance could be out there? And I can't even think of one, but I think it's just protecting the town in the event that there's ever some sort of confusion and will, I don't see why it would harm us having that language in there.
And doesn't the mortuary actually follow our ordinances?
Uh, you mean the part of vaults and...
The part of vaults and getting buried with a child or a cat.
Oh, I'm sure that's good.
So, the wording in there, I think, would be device be, be left there, but they didn't follow the ordinance.
Darryl, can you clarify something?
Yeah.
Some cemeteries allow one vault, and then if a family member, child, or spouse dies and they have their body cremated, then it can be buried at the same side of where the original vault is. Do we have that type of language in ours?
We probably wouldn't be able, we wouldn't have room to put a cremation vault.
Well, it's only the size of the, it's very small.
Well, the plots are about eight foot by three foot, thirty-six inches. And when we put the vault in, it's a tight fit, and that's just about the size. We did Les and Barbara Townsend, when they passed away, Les was cremated, Barbara was not. And they were buried adjoining, but they owned two plots. They had the plot and then, then, you know...
But do other cemeteries in town allow that?
Most, most are once plot for body.
Yeah. Or, um, St. George and, um, Washington City allow for three cremations in a plot. We had it down for two. We could do three. We could hit three in a plot.
But not a casket and a cremation.
Not a casket and a cremation, no. And we don't stack them. Usually we start hitting too many rocks. There would be a way if we could stack them.
So, how do you put the vault?
Pardon?
How do you put the vault and ask the vault?
We try to keep about two feet of dirt over the top.
Yeah, they're required to have at least twenty-four inches.
Now, sometimes, now, sometimes it's, we may hit some rocks, but it doesn't quite get two feet, but it's down there.
So, vaults are much three feet and height equals...
They're about three feet, yeah. Little, little, about thirty-two inches. On Section 12, I guess I probably ought to keep that in there, repairing, or keep the enclosure repaired, keep the animals out. We have no enclosures. Keep, uh, no fences or anything around any of the cemeteries. Which brings up a question. We've been referring to the Protestant Cemetery as a Pioneer Cemetery. The Pioneer Cemetery involves maybe the Catholic and the other, the Protestant. I think, I think we're remaining with Protestant and Catholic. I mean, that's the way it was. That's the history, the way back. That's the way they were always referred to. In fact, it was assigned over the gate, one time when they said Protestant Cemetery. So, if we wanted to name them, would we stick with Catholic and Protestant and LDS? Or would we want to change it to Pioneer Cemeteries? And then call them different sections?
From the town's perspective, we normally refer to the Catholic and Protestant as Historical Cemetery. We refer to the other cemetery as the Town, Leeds Town Cemetery.
Lowan Barnes and Historical Committee have the actual titles of those because of the Crocker affiliate that is involved in the restoration of the cemetery. I checked with them on the official thing. Even by Genvie is, uh, because it's more like in the way back.
Mayor Roberts? Can I just interject a comment?
Yeah, Mayor, come.
Just an answer to Frank's question. I once had a backhoe, and I was the gravedigger in Leeds for thirteen years.
You still have it? I'm looking for a backhoe.
It's hard to sell. The exact position of those plots is so critical. Many times, we go in to a spot we thought was the right spot, and we find a grave, or we'd make a grave, and the vault would be visible in the hole. And so, I would say it's very critical that you keep your grave plots one per plot or whatever you decide to do. I don't know how you could add an urn in some of those spots we had to dig. And I heard some comments here, don't they put them six feet down? No, they don't. You dig the hole deep enough to have about two feet on the top. And backhoe doesn't dig square holes, it digs hand-shaped holes. And sometimes you can't turn it around and get in the other way, and a lot of it's by hand. And so, to me, the gravedigging was a very precise thing, and it was not easy. We'd get backhoe in, we'd dig out the biggest part, and then it was all picked from the shovel after that. And that graveyard is very dense. There's hardly any plots left, I think. Do you have an idea on either?
There were one, oh, there's a few more.
A few more FDF. Anyway, just comment on that.
Right now, it's, uh, it's a real tactical problem just getting the tractor in there.
Right.
Merlin Sullivan's grave, it was, that was quite a challenge.
And not knocking over the other gravestones and things like that. Some of those, we just had to almost do all by hand.
We've had to move some headstones.
That was one job that, when I sold the backhoe, I was glad to see go. Not that there's any problem with digging a grave, it's just that it's very logistically a problem in that graveyard, and besides the rocks and other things.
You gotta hope that the graves were with the markers or the record.
Right. And some of them are not, and...
No, we had to...
No, and that's what we want to stay away from. That's what we want to change in the future, is that we be professional about that, because that plot is just as defined as your property or mine, and we're going to get very picky about property.
And some of those caskets that we've just about violated, were very old and rusty, maybe a hundred years or seventy-five or something. And to me, it was a sacred thing. I mean, this is their place of rest. And I always felt a big weight, because sometimes I'm the only one there, and nobody, and I'm digging, and they say, this is where, and I go in very easy with the hole, making sure that I'm not finding anything, so...
Well, until we get down about two feet or something, it is kind of being parallel because we have, running to where they were meant to put them in between, and have to take along the side and then move, move all over.
So, I'm for one plot per whatever you say.
Your bet.
I think that's wise.
Yeah, I think the cemetery ordinance is very crucial, because we don't have any rules that we run off of. That's, that's the fault. We're not a set of rules that we are guided by.
There's some places where it says unlawful, I'd rather put, like, no person paid or something like that, or against this ordinance, against...
I'd say it's unlawful.
Rather than say unlawful.
Darryl, I'd say it's unlawful.
You're gonna say it's unlawful?
Tweak that, tweak that however you want. I think it's, I think it merits a little more time, but I think it's something that is important for us to bring about in the near future. At this point, we, we are not selling plots. The biggest reason is because we don't have a real handle on what we have for any available cemetery plots and/or the exact location in some areas of what's there and what's not.
Well, you know how they want to put the crosses up at the Protestant Cemetery, I mean, at the back of a big rain back in the sixties, when, after the rain had subsided, they could see, the ground had settled, and they could see where every grave was. That's when the Catfish Charlie and the Lions went up there and put all of those wooden crosses up there. All the wooden crosses, you see that there were graves. Any interest in how they did that?
Any other suggestions?
Nope.
What do you got?
Um, on Section 22, no graves shall be opened in any of the cemeteries until the fee has been paid. Usually, we get paid by the mortician, the funeral home. Jean makes arrangements. It used to be that they would pay me, and I'd bring and give the check, bring the check into the town, but Jean would prefer she gets the money, so they send it to her, she keeps, keeps track of that. But very seldom, I mean, if it was a, this stuff happens pretty fast, and it's hard for, you'd have to make a trip down there to get the check, but they'd send it up, somebody would put it in mail, and we'd get it two weeks later. So, we had to just put arrangements. No graves should be opened, no arrangements for the payment of the fee, rather than the money in hand before we did. And then there's perpetual care. Amy has made you have a deal. I never realized there was so much in perpetual care, but you might read that over. And it's about, about two pages. About where the money goes and when it's paid. And evidently, in Washington, when they adopted it, they started right now, is we aren't there anybody else until you, if, if, there's no grandfathering in, in other words, of the plots. If you're gonna, if you're going to want a grave dug, or there's gonna be a burial, you pay the perpetual fee. And that was starting right when they approved the ordinance. Their fee is seventy-five dollars. We could use the money. There's times when we've had to go into the general fund in the past, and a few things done at the cemeteries.
That's the only place that we can pull money from for the cemetery, because there is no other place than the general fund.
Right. That if we had a perpetual fund, I don't know, do you want to start at, say, seventy, fifty, or twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five? I don't think. We don't have the maintenance that the city cemeteries have. We have no law on that, but we do have a water bill, and that would help, just pay some of the water.
There will always be some kind of maintenance because it exists.
You bet.
And you can sum it and then cover it up.
Okay. I'll work on that. Yes, Amy?
Um, Darryl, I'm in Section 9. Kind of going along with what you were saying about the payment of the fee before opening the grave. It says here that the owner of the plot or his heirs should be required to furnish money to the clerk recorder. So, that would have to be done Monday through Friday. And, you know, sometimes payments have a lot faster than that.
Yes, they do.
So, I was just wondering about the wording on this.
Yeah, that whole section there, circle here, can review that. Another situation I'm going to come into, I look forward to opening up a lot more plots. Hopefully, we'll get some property adjacent to the town cemetery. We just ran into a situation with Merlin Sullivan. He bought, he bought a bunch of plots, and, but they were never assigned. And so, as deaths occurred in that Sullivan family, they'd, well, put it, use this plot here and that plot. So, when it came out, now, I've got a couple that won't be together. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put in here that any time mobile plots are sold, they need to be designated at the time of stamp. If they want to come in and change it, I'd rather, than eliminate that. That was a very dangerous situation on that. Anyway, next meeting, next plot.
And, Darryl, you know, I make a suggestion, if you want to give the community some time, then I think a business plan, we're looking to expand device and cemetery property that we might have some of the business majors as an internship project, do a business plan, figure out the feasibility costs, whether to take the maintenance operation, develop what the cost to head off if we did expand the cemetery, see what costs we could work for the town. Because there's going to be continual maintenance even after, you know, years to come on all these cemeteries. But it might be worthwhile to have a plot there. Just looking, if we did expand the cemetery, what our costs would be able to run period of time.
Okay.
So, if you want to go looking at, at school business, maybe different types of projects, like, if you're interested in that.
Pretty good project. I did a project in Dallas on bicycle paths through Riverside, California. What happened? I'm a Californian, but I didn't move to Utah to change it. I came to Utah to change.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darryl.
Mayor, could we ask a favor? We can hardly hear as best when it comes to Frank and Nate. I don't know if they're not speaking up, but we can't hear very well back here.
Can you hear? Is that better? Is that better? Maybe?
Um, is your microphone maybe not up?
That's not what I heard.
It's not?
Oh, okay. We'll speak up.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to discussion item number five, dealing with a, dealing with our staff report or recommendations that came from the Planning Commission to the Town Council back in February. We did start this process in March, but we did not complete this, and this is where, Bob, you wanna, let's just go off from this staff report that comes from the Planning Commission, that lists ten items. And we're just gonna go through those ten items, and some of these we've gone through already. We just want to make sure that we understand as a council body right here, obviously, there's, this is discussion, but we're gonna have a consensus of where we stand on each one of these items. We're gonna just leave these out here one other time. Okay? So, we just kind of go through those ten items?
Yes.
Ten items, I think, that came out of the Planning Commission meeting on February fifteenth of this year. So, the Planning Commission, obviously, they, they began their review with an understanding that an annexation and development agreement was already in place, which had been approved in two thousand and nine, which obviously granted certain approvals to the project. But the, uh, the Planning Commission recommended the conditions of approval as follows, and there, some of them are kind of broad. So, number one is compliance with all Leeds Town codes unless a specific waiver or variance is granted by the Town Council. That's the first one. So... Okay. Clara? As a council, is everyone, you have that paper, right? Everyone has that?
No.
Okay, now, that's very broad.
Yeah, very broad.
But that's an easy one to say, yeah, I agree with that. It's gonna comply with all Leeds Town codes unless something, unless some kind of waiver's done. Unless a specific waiver. And so, you know, we've talked, obviously, the majority of the time has been spent talking about modifications to the street standards. Right? That's, that's the whole, if we briefly talked about parking, basically, there are no waivers granted at this point in parking. And briefly talked about, I said, no, there are no waivers. You said, pretty, so you didn't take a vote on it, but you said, you're staying with the, I think, two-story limitation of the ordinance right now. So, there have been, so the big issues, we've spent a lot of time on it, been street standards, and that's covered later. So, anyway, that's number one. Number two, all utilities, including water, wastewater, storm drainings, electric power, natural gas, telephone, and similar utilities shall comply with local and state standards. That's pretty clear. Is that agreeable by the council?
Yeah.
Number three is, street designs, which are different than those set forth in the Leeds standard specification for design and construction, shall be approved by the Leeds Town Council after hearing the recommendation of the Planning Commission and the Leeds Town Consulting Plan or Engineering Engineer. So, we have spent, I think, at least two previous meetings discussing those requested modifications. Yeah, and I'd like to hold that, number three, for a future meeting to specifically address that and come to a conclusion on where we're gonna sit with those street standards. That obviously is the big one. And related to that, number four is a traffic mitigation plan, shall be approved by the Town Council, which sets forth how proposed traffic from project will be accommodated by the public streets. These accesses are needed in order for the project to reach build-out. So, they have submitted a draft traffic mitigation plan, and it's had some discussion.
Now, Bob, there is an issue of term here. So, this one says three accesses are needed, and then you said these, so...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, three, three is a minimum. Three accesses are needed. Three accesses are needed in order the project reaches build-out.
So it's three and not the...
Yes, I'm sorry. Three, three accesses.
Okay, we're gonna have, one of our, our next discussion items is specific for that, uh, traffic mitigation. So let's, let's just keep moving on.
So number five, you know, there's an agreement now that gravel parking areas would not be allowed. All designated parking areas shall have a hard surface consisting of asphalt, concrete, rip pavors, or similar material approved by the town council.
Are we good with that?
We're good.
Yep.
Number six.
I was just trying to struggle if there was some area where a gravel parking lot would be exempt from, right now, I can't think of one. We've got them out of parks.
Well, what about trailheads accessing the desert return to build-out parking?
These are parking areas, but I don't know that there's any of those within this project.
Yeah, very fine.
Yeah.
More about reckless conservation area issue?
I would say that if there were something like that within a project, it would be addressed when they were doing trails or things of that nature.
Yeah, that, that's a good point, because obviously, the idea of a, a natural trailhead being cut off and maybe the idea, I guess, I could be addressed later on as a, for the town council. We were thinking in terms of residential, commercial, parking areas, those need to have some kind of hard surface. Uh, so we go on to number six.
Yes.
Does all buildings shall comply with the design intent set forth in the architectural pattern book for the Great Mine Wash project. All buildings which are three stories or more in height, and maybe it'll just be three stories, but shall be subject to design review by the planning commission prior to a motion on sustainability permit. The purpose of such design review is to promote compliance with the architectural pattern book. That will be the main check to make sure the project stays a high quality, because the really, though those pattern books are what you have to rely on to say, hold a developed to a quality product.
I thought we discussed, you've got three stories or more, uh, brain, brain fire department, right? Giving you three stories would be problematic for a fire department.
This is, well, our draft came prior, prior to your discussion on height, and then you also definitely take a vote on it, so I, you know, but, yeah, as, as a consensus, this group agreed that we were gonna stick with the existing height limitation. It exists right now.
Was that not the consensus we came to?
Yes.
Yes. And didn't it include a specific height also?
It's the height that is in the mixed-use ordinance, which is thirty-five feet. So you'd say, all buildings which are three stories or thirty-five feet...
Up to...
Shall be seventy-three. Yeah.
Here, can I see, do you have your pattern book, Andy?
Yeah.
I think we have a piece of that.
I think it's important for us as a council to realize that the pattern book is not a set of plans for a specific building.
Basically. A question, we're saying thirty-five feet. Are we saying that you can get three stories out of that, and you could, or are we saying no?
Thirty-five feet is the way the language reads.
You can get nine feet per story. You can get nine foot per story. Twenty-seven foot, with a five-foot pitch roof, which is thirty-five foot, depending on what's the...
It depends on, it depends on the use of the building, right? It really does. So our ordinance doesn't restrict the stories. No, restricts the height.
Yeah, I was gonna say thirty-five feet. And that's to the peak of the roof or to the top of the flat roof?
That's to the highest point on the building.
Mm-hmm. Exactly. I haven't checked the definition.
It's, it's to the highest point.
Large towns, I know, will go to the highest point on the flat roof, and then the midpoint between the peak and ease on a pitch roof, but I, every town addresses it a little different. I'm not sure how it reads.
So we're okay with that language from that recommendation from the planning commission? Yes or no?
Are we just saying feet, or are we saying three stories or thirty-five?
The language here says three stories or more in height is gonna be subject to a review by the planning commission.
So if a design review comes to the planning commission and it's more, and the three stories or more, uh, let's say it's four stories, then the planning commission can issue building permit without any further saying? I mean, that's kind of the way it reads, maybe?
Height regulations.
Or say more or more. Seems like it opens up the possibility of still having a four-story.
Well, we've got high, high regulations under our, under our codes. No main building shall exceed two and one-half stories or thirty-five feet in height, whichever is left. No dwelling structures shall be less than one story. Accessory buildings and structure shall not exceed one story in height and will not exceed twenty-five feet in height. So in our ordinance, it says, two and a half stories are thirty-five foot in height. This is multifamily. You need to read that definition under mixed use. So the mixed-use ordinance are twenty-three point seven, says the maximum building height shall be thirty-five feet. So we can just go with that language. Eliminate the three-story to say buildings. But here, the issue is, what buildings, what structures do you want, do you feel needs to go through a design review process? And should it go to the planning commission plus the town council? Or are you comfortable just delegating that issue to the planning commission?
If it was anything above the thirty-five feet, it would have to come to the town council, because that variance would have to be agreed upon by the town council.
Well, it seems to me we need to, to remove that far more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think we're better off just leaving it as the ordinance says, the mixed use is thirty-five feet. But if you adapt, then if someone wants to come and make a provision for a variance and then with the process, we don't have to state that in there, right?
No, I, I would root that. You could lose everything on here dealing with the height of it. On this one here, buildings need to comply with the design intent by the architectural plan book and, and throw that, because as far as height goes, it's already governed by the ordinance.
And the question on this, number six, is requiring some of the structures at least, trying to set a threshold on which buildings should go through design review by the planning commission, with the assumption that those that don't go by, those that don't go through the design review by the planning commission, we can just handle by staff. The question is, and the whole purpose of this again, is to make sure that the project, buildings that come forward meet the intent that that pattern book sets forth. If you're relying on that pattern book to say, hey, that's pretty good on the project, and you don't want to cheat it over the years, and so there's got, you know, maybe you want, maybe you want to handle that response, so this, you know, the draft fighter said, well, you know, at least the planning commission would perform that. You may want that, those structures to come to you as well. And the question is, do you want everything over one story? Do you want two-story structures to go through a design review? Do you want, or you just, at what point, you know, which, which structures, I assume you don't want all of them. That would probably burden you down quite a bit. Staff would handle it, normal single-family homes. But do you want duplexes, multifamily? Maybe you'd say all multifamily structures shall go through a design review before the planning commission town council. So that's, that's the issue we're trying to address.
So something like all buildings which are three stories or multifamily dwellings shall be subject to design review by planning commission?
They do that. Maybe just say multifamily, and that would mean a duplex or more, anything that's two, you know, duplex, triplex, fourplex, whatever.
Or mixed use.
Or mixed use.
Well, what about townhomes? Do you have a six-attached units?
Right, yeah.
Is that a building of significant size that ought to go through a review process? Right? I would prefer to leave out the three-story, because after the incident we had with the attorney that came here and gave us the definition of what family was, and it was okay for someone to have twenty-one people in a house to rent, face the fact that it was a family house, I'm kind of worried about someone defining, well, three stories means that there's three separate levels, therefore doesn't define the height, and I'd like to avoid going down that path.
Let me, how about this? If you say, all buildings other than single-family detached dwellings shall be subject to design review. So that, that would, everything, and then the question is, are you comfortable with the planning commission doing that function, or would you rather have those come before
I think, whereas, I don't see any, or similar story. Let's just get extra system of checks and balances. Well, we have some staff members that have been on the planning commission, maybe you think, Alan, and Peter has, and several other people here have been on, what their reaction would be, how they, to me, they have a responsibility. If we take too much away from them, then what's the responsibility? What's your reactions? Sort of Peter's reaction. Did you hear that, Peter?
No.
Could you repeat it, please?
We truly can't.
I said, you've been on the planning commission, and is it something that we want to still give the planning commission a task to do, to look at things that are over single dwelling, to make those recommendations? Or should it be something that comes to council for final review?
Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't the planner review those, those single-family home things or, or...
He does not.
When I was on the planning commission, we did not review and, and, and approve single-family dwellings. I mean, they went to an engineer, and then they came back to us, and then we, you know, we, we had all the, all those, all those helped. I don't know if that makes any sense to you, but, but, you know, for, for single-family home, I don't see, I don't see any, any reason why the planning commission can't, can't process those through. I really don't. Anything more than that, you might want to keep control of.
I have mixed feelings on that. Any building permits that we have right now that are residential, single-family, are looked at by our inspector, and that's, that's the staff that we utilize for that process, for that application.
But, but does he, I'm sorry, I'll go ahead.
Go ahead.
Does he, does he review the plans? Does Dennis review the plans before the, before the structure's built? Or does he come out and, 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 you know, the footings are poured, he comes out, okay, the footings are poured?
He does the plan review before.
He does the plan review also, okay.
It used to not be that way. It used to be...
Well, I don't have, I don't have any problem with that. I mean, Dennis is, Dennis is very, very capable, you know, and...
Obviously, if we had more staff, but staff right now is your planning commission and your town council. That's your staff in LEEDs. And so those, those two bodies are the bodies that take care of those type of issues. And so we're talking about everything except residential, single-family.
And the building inspector, whether it's Dennis, Merlin, or whoever, really would be very capable of doing the design review on a single-family dwelling. He can have this pattern book, I mean, for a Great Mine Wash, it shows what should, you know, what their intent of the design, exterior design is on a single-family dwelling, and he can check that. That, that would be pretty common and typical to do as part of his, you know, design and plan. And then everything else, that, you know, I think that's a good break. All buildings other than single-family detached dwellings shall be reviewed by planning commission or planning commission and town council.
It could have verbiage in there that gives some leeway and discretion. I'm just imagining with the scope and scale of this project, could it be, I mean, could we come to burden somebody to send every plan through both groups? Just the number of apartments we talked about, the number of condominiums, townhomes... Mixed use. Maybe at, well, we just, in our agreement, we put the verbiage in there, at the discretion of the planning commission and the town council, they can, you know, at least have the planning commission look at everything, and then at the discretion of planning commission, you want to send it to the town council. Do that one. Do that. Make them comfortable with that.
No, they won't.
No, that, yeah, that's the issue.
That's where you, that's where you pull rank on, say, right, that's the way it is.
We just, the town council.
But, I'm sorry, aren't they, aren't they a recommending body?
They are.
And, and that you, you, you five up there have the signature capability on any particular project?
But as, as staff, as a body, they can, they can approve. We could make that decision to say, they could approve whatever that application is that's before them. Obviously, if it's dealing with the land use issues, then it's going to be a recommendation from them, but we're specifically talking, the land use is already determined. Now it's some type of a structure that's going on there. The only reason I say that, as a planning commissioner, but maybe it was more to deal with residential, it just did not make sense on the residential. But when you're dealing with multifamily or, and/or commercial, or a combination of both, it's coming through that process anyway, especially if you're dealing with any commercial or a mixed commercial or something. It's coming through a commercial site development plan and that whole process, so it's gonna hit that planning commission anyway. But I don't know whether to, I don't, I, I don't...
I don't believe it, maybe it's already spelled out.
I'm curious.
Yes, Peter?
What, what you might want to do is ask Dennis what his capabilities are as far as, you know, beyond the, the normal residential, and maybe just throw a lot of it in his ballpark. Say, if he's capable of doing townhouses, or, or apartments, or whatever, you could, you could take that route also. I mean, you know, the inspector's gonna be there inspecting it anyways.
Yeah, some municipalities use contract plan reviews for commercial or multifamily or larger directions like that, even in St. George City, and what they have for, should plan examiners, they steal contracts some of those out.
Same to next stretch.
And I don't know that we need to spell that out here, but I... I'm, I'm comfortable with starting with the planning commission, because I think that that's, that's where that recommendation can take place, as I start that and look at each individual application and say, okay, we're not comfortable with making a decision on this. We'll make a recommendation, but we feel that this needs to go to the council.
So are we going to change verbiage at all on, on this part of the, all buildings which are three stories or more in height?
Remove the height, remove any reference to height, other than the thirty-five feet. And I, I don't know that we even need to have that in there, because it's already stated in the mixed-use ordinance that they're, you know, that's governed by...
So do we need to delineate which buildings would be...
Yeah, and we need, other than a single-family home.
All buildings except a single-family.
And I'd even suggest that maybe all buildings other than... And I would suggest that maybe all buildings other than single-family detached dwellings shall be subject.
Yes.
And if you get the townhomes, that would be subject to the government.
That's good.
And I think, you know, Dennis or your general inspector or others could probably handle single-family as an odd use.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a good resolution.
And they'll show the subject's design to go by the planning commission. And then leave it up to the discretion of the planning commission if they want to have another check and balance with the town council.
That would be my suggestion.